Welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectmen's Meeting, dated October 22nd. To the all Selectmen present, first thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anything to be added to the agenda? Selectmen's minutes, I think I'll read them off, then see if you can join me. Regular session, October 8, 2019. Gordon?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Executive session, July 23rd, 2019, Section B. Tom?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session, August 13th, 2019, Section B. Tom?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All yours, please.
Okay. I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 33 for $385,304.75. Vendor warrant number 34 for $79,285.2. Withholding warrant number 35 for $143,749.77. Ambulance commitment for $41,169.65. That was from September 30th, 2019, to October 6th, 2019. An ambulance commitment from October 7th, 2019, to October 13th, 2019, for $25,660.85.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I affirm the approval of the following bills. Brooks and Durances for $3,300.35. And Attorney Lawrence Mayo for $3,015. Tom?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One extension. Do you want to continue?
Can I do that?
Yeah.
I move to affirm the approval of the following bill. South coastal countries legal for... Sorry. South coastal...
Should be county.
Counties. Legal services. For $3,500?
We're not picking on your Pam.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, move to approve the following warrant. Vendor warrant number 36 for $284,981.96.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen's bills. Move to approve the payment of Selectmen's bills dated October 22nd, 2019, to the insurance line for $34. The MIIA Property and Casualty Group. WB Mason from the Selectmen's expense account for $4.36. I move those ones.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move KP Law PC $1,833.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, then you vote.
Well, if the board wants to take it out of order, because I don't think we have these two people...
Chart. One second. Pam, do we have to vote the bill that we took out?
No, because you guys did it on the warrant. Because you guys signed the front of it, and you signed the back. And then that was part of that warrant. You just put that number one.
Okay.
We had on the schedule, I should ask the board, are you guys ready to make a decision on that? At this time?
Yep. Got to do it sometime.
Gordon?
So, I had... I just want to make sure I have her as my first.
Yes.
So, I... Yes. So, I had Wendy Adams as my top choice.
I agonized... At the end of the day, I had to think about what I thought would be a candidate that can hit the ground running and help us through a transition period with some background and experience. I'm leaning exactly the same way. My top pick would be Wendy Adams as well.
I liked Wendy in the interview, and I also liked the fact that we had Brenda Fitchell. Unfortunately, Brenda doesn't have the required educational background to do it. But if I was voting with my heart, I'd vote for Brenda. But to make it unanimous, I'll go with Wendy Adams as well, because she's got the education and the background. And she's interviewed well.
In the motion, do we have to...
Just move it. Well, I think you were asking about any contingencies?
Yeah, because we talked about doing a...
Quarrying background check?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Background check.
And...
And an acceptance of...
Yeah, right. And we should, you know, set up some kind of a review process?
Yeah, that was the word I was looking at.
You know, three months, six months. Because it isn't just whether it's working for us, it needs to be working for her too.
So you're looking for a probationary period?
Yes. Well, you have it in the bylaw, right? It's in the bylaw. The probationary period there is more as a guy... Well, no, as an alert to the department heads to say, "You really should be taking a look at this person after six months. Don't wait a full year when you're going to be doing the evaluation. Take a look at this person after six months." And I think that's a reasonable amount of time. That's going to be a couple of months. So we're talking October 22nd today, so we're talking April 22nd, something like that.
You want that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please. That somebody's moving somewhere seconded that Wendy Adams be hired as the Council on Aging Director. It's not an appointment, so there's no term of office per se.
Right.
Like contingent upon SaaS factory quarry background check and her acceptance of the town's offer.
I'll move that exactly that way. Okay. I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that her? Okay, so...
Charlie?
Do you all have any questions, or...
Did you just say you wanted to move that until April?
No, no, no. The April is that they would like to review her job performance, maybe meet with her, meet with the Council on Aging Directors after six months to talk about how things are going and whether everything's working out or not. That's what they were talking about the April.
Are you just talking about Brenda, or are you talking about the law?
We're talking about Wendy Adams, who the board just hired as the Council on Aging Director.
Oh, you just hired her?
Yes. That's what the board just did a few seconds ago. Yes.
We missed pending her acceptance.
Right. Yeah.
I don't agree with that.
Okay, so why don't we get back to the regular... Please. We are getting... Excuse me. Thank you.
Well, I think we missed the discussion that you had as to how you came about your decision. Just...
Wait two seconds.
Yeah, I know. We were having a book club, we thought we'd be here many times, sorry. And we thought it was near the end of your agenda.
Well, there's no specific... For the appointments, there are actual timed appointments. That's when it will happen. The board can take anything it wants out of order, if it wishes to. For all the items that are... We have like 40, 40 items that they might be talking about. The board can always take them. There's no assigned time for each of those items.
Oh, I see. Did you have a discussion that we missed, or no?
No, they just discussed.
Well, I think the board discussed it in brief, yeah, as to some of the reasons why, and...
I mean, we've all been looking at this for two weeks individually. It wasn't a whole lot to...
There were just two people, though?
No, there was four candidates. It's always difficult to pick amongst people. You don't really know. You're presented with a bunch of facts. You see a person for 45 minutes. It's not a whole lot to go on. But for me, if somebody wanted an explanation, I'd be happy to give it to them afterwards. Or even here. I'm looking at somebody I think can help build a department who has some background. Will this person be a long-time employee? Maybe not. But at least for the time being, I think we need some leadership, somebody who's got some background, some experience, and the educational component. And again, most of what you do when you hire, and I've been hiring people for 40 years, it's an educated guess at the end of the day.
No guarantees.
And for me, I had them ranked, and I had Wendy ranked at the top of the list, and that's...
What did you base your ranking on, who?
Whether or not they had the educational experience, whether or not they'd worked for the Council on Aging before, had they visited the Council on Aging, was actually a big one for me.
Likewise.
I'm just looking at it as, I mean, I'm involved with the Council on Aging, go there every week, and I just don't find her a strong person to be a director. And she's very nice, love her, but as being a director, a strong person, I think that's what we need over there.
I'm confused. Are you talking about Wendy Adams?
No, not Wendy.
Okay, well, the board...
You said Brenda, right?
No.
No, no, we hired Wendy.
I thought they said Brenda.
No.
Wendy Adams.
They're thinking of hiring Wendy.
Never mind. Sorry, we got here late.
Charlie?
Yes, okay. Talking about other sort of hires here. So, a couple of weeks ago, the board was notified about two vacancies that are going to be occurring. One already has occurred, one on the Plating Board, one on the Board of Health. What I did do was put a series of press releases and notifications and such with a deadline of November 5th. The board didn't provide any guidance. I'm not saying you should have, but just trying to do as well as I could under these circumstances. Just to review how, when we deal with elected boards and filling vacancies, what happens is the remaining members of that particular board or the joint meeting with the members of the board of selectmen, you technically are electing someone to fill that slot until the next May election. It may be that the term itself is up, in which case, you know, the seat becomes vacant and anybody can run. It may be that that person's filling for a few months, and then the seat has a year or two years or three years or how many years left in the term, and that seat's again on the election ballot for the remainder of the term. And each person on each board has a vote. It's not one vote from the board cycle, one vote from the other committee or commissioner or board. So far as I know, we've received two town bank forms for the Plating Board. Again, the deadline is not today or anything like that, it's another couple of weeks. One is from Alan Diaz, one's from Timothy Fabrowski, I think it is. In terms of how you want to do this, I don't know whether you want to set up appointments with... Because we did get one, Steve McFon is later in the pile here, but he's interested in serving on the Board of Health. We may get other people interested in serving on either of these boards. I don't know how the board wants to do the logistics of this. Do you want to meet with each of the individual boards on the 12th and have everybody come in and be interviewed for the position? And then the two boards can continue that joint meeting and elect somebody? I don't know how you all want to do it.
When is the process then?
So I put a deadline on November 5th, which would give a week to get everything scheduled to the 12th, because we have a three-week gap between now and November 12th.
Right, so that's the deadline?
Well, I said it. The board could tell me to set a different deadline. When I did the press release, I said November 5th. That gave people three weeks to respond. Right.
I would think it would make sense if the people met with the board to find out what the responsibilities are first.
Well, we always do.
Well, we could do it now, I'm sure. Yeah, usually for the appointing ones, that's how we handle it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Just so that they don't...
No, I agree. To get some exposure to what the position entails, yes.
Okay, so let's start off. Is November 5th an agreeable deadline date?
Yeah, it is for me.
Okay.
Any further discussion? November 5th?
That's fine. Okay, so what I would do then is anybody who comes in with a town bank form between now, including these ones, to November... Pam has been giving them to the respective boards, notifying them. And so what I'll do is then send a note at the end to say, "You all should probably set up appointments for your individual boards to meet with these people, whether you do it on one night or several nights, however you do it." And then, what do you want to have happen? Do you still want all these people, if they remain interested, to come to a joint meeting on some particular date, which won't be the 12th, probably be the 26th at this point of November? And do interviews? How do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Because if it's only one person, it's probably fairly easy. But in this case, we already have two people interested in the Plating Board slot.
I don't suspect there's be too many more people interested, but I'm good with that.
One thing is familiar.
It might be tough to squeeze in the meetings. I don't know what the meeting schedule is.
Right, well, that's why, I mean...
So I don't know if it would make sense to make the vote in the first meeting. Our first meeting in December, because of Thanksgiving coming that week.
I can do that. Well, we can adjust our agenda to non-critical things.
Are we agreed on November 5th? I mean, December 5th?
Well, the November 5th for the deadline, the board agreed.
Yeah. And then it's a matter of giving them an opportunity.
Give them an opportunity.
So December 10th is going to be your December meeting, because the other date's going to be the 24th, you're not meeting probably then. I could show up.
You can meet, but I'm not...
I would think it would make sense to give the boards enough time for their schedule.
Yeah, great.
We'll set up that. So the idea will be deadlines, November 5th, at some point between now and let's say early December, they set up appointments, meet with these people. But all the people who are still interested at that point after that, come in, meet at a joint, are here for a joint meeting of those particular boards with you, and then we have an election to choose.
Yeah, that works.
Does it have to be a quorum of each board?
Needs to be a quorum of the total. So that, for instance, you've got five people, if you talk about the Board of Health, you'll need at least three. So if the three of you are here, I'll check with Council, but...
Yeah, because if we can't get a quorum from a particular board that we're talking about to come in and vote on it...
Right.
I would think it would be not valid.
Well, I'll check. We're already at 7:45. I'm going to recommend that you continue the revocation hearing on Davis on Motive until 12th at 7:50.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple recycling fee abatement requests, unfortunately separated in the pile here. First is for Bill 458. This recycling bill was... So the property was sold on July 31st, so the records at the assessor's office and that treasurer's office were for the previous owner. The bills get sent out, it was about mid, early August, so they, you know, there was no change of ownership. So the bill was sent to the old, the previous owners. The new owners never got the first bill. They did get the pound stew bill. They have a private hauler duly, and they'd like, since they weren't notified with the first bill, they'd like still to get an abatement.
Do we have a letter from duly saying, "In fact, they are..."
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the package.
Then I would make a motion that we allow the abatement based on the not having the information on the timing basis, much to the changing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The commuter rail community's coalition is asking for support to submit a list of funding options to the legislature about MBTA and other mass transit funding. The coalition's not indicating that individual communities need to be in support of every option, but they'd like to have the legislature at least examine all those as possibilities.
Is there a list of the possibilities?
Yes, I have it here. I don't know that I... I think I may have made copies for each of you. Pam, did I make... Did they get... They didn't get this?
They did.
I can carry this over until November 12th, have the board take a look at it. Okay, let me do that. Mass Cultural Council, we have the state grant paperwork, in this case would be signed by Troy, so if the board would authorize Troy to sign on behalf of a board in the town...
I'll move that. Did Mr. Garrett be authorized to sign?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tanya Masah...
Where?
I'm sorry, where the... So this, so signature here, we'll fill out the rest. And then... To the next yellow sticky. Holly from Halifax, please appoint Tanya Masah to the committee for a term expired June 3rd, 2020. She's been on the board before, just once while she doesn't send a note in saying, "Yes, I want to be reappointed," so it's, even though it's now already October.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Until 2050.
That would be the easy way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old Colony Planning Council Delegate Vacancy, College School Team from the Plating Board may be interested. He's checking his own commitments and that of the position, so...
That would be good.
Just a reminder on Amanda's Estates, there's a public hearing on the proposed special permit with the ZBA on Monday, November 4th at 8:00 PM up in the Bray Hall. A copy of the special permit applications here in the file, if any of you need to take a look at it, or if anybody's playing around with it. I already talked about Steve McFon being interested in Board Health, so we already dealt with that.
What about agriculture, Charlie?
Culture.
Sorry, yeah. Suzanne Emerson, could you please appoint or reappoint Suzanne Emerson for a term expiring June 3rd, 2022?
She's agreed to accept?
Well, she contacted Pam specifically.
Doesn't matter, we're going to appoint her.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Emergency Management Grant, grant paperwork to have an interim update. The HEMA Plan Board has Troy signed authorizing Chief of Heroes to sign the paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. My pot's a pot discussion, which we'll get into in about 10 minutes. Highway contract, there are two copies. We signed a memorandum of agreement last time, so now it's the contract itself, the yellow stickies, everybody signs, so the board will formally approve the contract and sign.
I move to approve the contract with highway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The fire chief is proposing having an unpaid volunteer fire position. I don't mean one, but it could be several people at the station. They wouldn't be responding to calls and such, they would be doing work around the station. For instance, they might be auxiliary at a fire scene in the sense of not fighting a fire, but providing supplies or something like that. His... What he wants to be doing is, he wants to avoid having someone become a call firefighter and then say to that person, "Now you have to go to the academy for firefighter one and two, and we have to pay you." Well, there are two copies, yeah.
My fault.
So that... Because once we say to somebody, "You've got to be in a certain place at a certain time," it's on us to pay that person for being that. Whereas as a true volunteer unpaid, it's up to them. If they want to be more than a volunteer, they're going to have to go to the academy themselves in their own time.
So what he's asking for is to bring volunteers in, actually train them to be firefighters, but not using as firefighters?
They would go to the academy and such, yes. But during that time, they would not be fighting fires and such, they wouldn't be qualified to do so.
Do we have to pay for them to go to the academy?
No, we don't. Either it's free or they do.
Oh, okay.
There's no downside then? I'm not seeing a downside.
And I reviewed it with Mass and Total Concerns Association, I reviewed it with Town Council, and they set up a series of waiver forms and such, so...
Gordon?
I guess the only question I have is, before, when he hired a call firefighter, they were getting paid?
To go to the academy.
To go to the academy.
And then what was happening is, we'd pay them, they'd go, they'd finish...
And then they'd transfer someplace else.
And then they'd go somewhere else, yeah. So we were out money that we had put in.
Well, he still have the ability if we can't get call firefighters?
If we can't get volunteers, if we can't get call fire... He could always hire a call firefighter if he wants to.
Yeah, what he's trying to do is a cost savings. If you call the call firefighter and just to help clean up around the station or do work like that or go on a particular run, then we obligated to pay that individual.
Is anybody actually interested in these positions?
He must think that they are.
Yeah, I would assume so. It just seems odd.
Well, he's been good for us so far, you know?
Yeah, he's been right on.
He hasn't had any bad ideas.
And presenting this, you see, he is strong chief, so the board doesn't formally have to approve this. But I wanted the board to at least know, be aware that this was happening down the station. If you had any concerns, I could have the chief come in and...
The only concern would be is if he couldn't get because of the change. Was this change...
It is, he'll still have, obviously we have the full timers, we'll still have the ability of call firefighters, we'll still then have the ability of volunteer firefighters.
Okay, well, it works for me.
So what do you want, a letter of support or just nothing?
You're just advising.
Yeah, he wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, if you did have any concerns, he could always come in and just talk with you.
Sounds like a good cost-saving man. At the same time, they go get some things accomplished without going through all the ... Sign for the elementary school?
Yeah.
At the last meeting, we held off because I wanted you to look at it.
I don't see a problem with it.
It's either put the sign up or have you standing there pointing at people in your direction.
I could do that.
And the real reason I wanted...
You want a yellow vest?
The board has jurisdiction over the school grounds, so I wanted the board to take a formal vote to approve it.
Can we charge a toll for kids playing over there?
I think you have to charge a toll for the people lining up at the hour of 2:30.
Yeah, that... The adjustments that were made there really seem to have alleviated some, but not completely.
Cutting the trees down gave a bit of view, viewing of what was going on.
Yeah, I mean, it's still crazy there in the morning when they pick up.
What type of sign is he talking about putting up?
We have the...
Yeah, it's in here.
We're not talking a neon blinking sign?
No, no, it's in keeping with...
Historic district?
It's in keeping with the other sign.
Oh, so it's on the same line as the sign we have of already?
Well, no, there's the sign right at the entrance of the driveway, which is smaller, it's maybe one and a half by one and a half, two by two, that's simply just plain fields that way. This is a much larger sign that...
Just directs.
Yeah, right.
This one here?
Yeah. But that will be up.
And it's far enough in that it's not going to be in the way, or probably you can't see it from the street.
I feel comfortable already.
I should go through?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Talent Bank Forum, um, the forum itself, um, we carried this over from a couple weeks ago. It's a bit, it has a bit more detail in the request for information. I didn't know if the board wanted to formally approve it or not.
I, I've gone over it several times. I didn't see anything that was, you know, interfered with anybody's personal life, no, no core recourse into anything of that nature.
I, it's fine with me.
Gordon?
Yep. The only question we had last week was, we only had one side of it, when it was just Troy.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I did, I made, I gave me copies of that side, yes.
So you were moved to accept?
Please.
So we had a motion to accept?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have copies of the site plan for Walmart. This is sort of a change in the configuration of the parking area. They want more space devoted to their pickup of groceries area, sort of like Peapod, I guess, for stock and pop or whatever, so.
Well, I thought they already had spaces like that.
Well, they do, but I think they want to expand that. I guess they're seeing more business or whatever, or they think they'll get more business if they have more space.
Well, they have pickup for their hard goods. I think it's the, it's the groceries in particular.
But they, you know, I don't understand, they're still gonna use the same front door, even in and out exit door, always gonna stop traffic flow.
Well, it's over on the side.
Yeah, it's on the side. It's gonna be like a drive up kind of thing.
So the computers are taking over the checkout counters and everything else, so the people have to go out and guide them.
You know, I gotta tell you, as much as I resisted the self-serve line, if, if you only have a few items, you can get out of there. I, I mean, it works. And theirs are actually better than other stores. They're easier to use.
Yeah, but you know, they, they make you take a carriage, go in and find the goods because they change things around all the time, check the price, put it in, then take up, want you to check it out, bag it and pay for it too?
I understand that the trade-off is getting out of there.
Yeah.
Okay. The board doesn't have to take any action on it. It's here, they're looking for comments by November 8th.
Okay. It's eight o'clock, and we have our wonderful individual here to talk about the watershed.
Not more than one individual.
Water under the bridge or through the culvert?
I'm sorry?
Water under the bridge or through the culvert?
Little of both.
You have the floor.
Thank you for adding that to the agenda. It does look like we have a lot to take care of, so we're hoping that we can serve what we have to do as well.
Suzanne, why don't you just move up to, for the TV.
Camera.
Is there, and if the other, other members would like to come on up, please come on. Just raise your hand.
So I'm Suzanne Lilly, I'm the president of the Mass Water Tribe Association, and flipping tonight is Congaro, who's the vice president, Jamie Stewart, who's the treasurer, and Mary Ann Moore, who also is the executive secretary. So, um, in that stack of papers, I don't know if you printed everything.
Yeah, they have.
Yeah.
So I, I did not, I did not, I sent it.
That's a lot of material.
Actually, I wanted to ask that something's available, but I did not have everything printed. So, um, we're here tonight to discuss three specific items, but this is the history that I'd like to review that will give you the background of these things. So we're very grateful that the watershed has been studied and publicized widely, although the pace is slow, progress hasn't been made. Future improvements are still necessary. The formalization of concerns about my Ponce de Ponce began with the publication of the TMBL, the total minimum daily load, um, refers to pollution, that was published by Mass D E P in 2016. It, um, and specifically, it looks at, um, the most important one I'd be looking at is of course phosphorus as a pollutant. That is not in your packet, but that's very lengthy and very tedious. That was followed in 2017 by the, um, D E P issuing to the city of Brockton, an administrative consent order, a notice of non-compliance. This was a big step forward. The ACO identified violations of chapter 371 of the Acts of 1964, water quality impairments and improvements from my Ponce de Ponce, including timelines for completion of tasks. It also included updating a comprehensive water management plan. To the best of my knowledge, the most recent plan was submitted in 2009 and has not yet been approved by Mass D E P. So although that's, um, necessary, it just hasn't happened. This is one that the ACO is also available to as a digital file. Next, in January of 2018, a resource management plan, scope of work drought, was issued. And it basically takes the ACO, which is fairly bureaucratic, and turns it into actionable statement of work items, such as review of historical information, collection of data, estimating seasonal releases from the dam, operating procedures for Silver Lake and the diversion station and stopper dam.
Just one, Suzanne Marion, just one second, cause I'm thinking, ACO?
Administrative consent.
Okay, so priorities were the one, I don't know. I thought that's what it was, but what you're, another organization or not?
Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry. There's only a couple acronyms in this, so we're, we're getting there. After the issuing of this resource management plan, the R and P, there was a public hearing, and we were able to submit, um, comments, uh, written comments to D E P. Among the many comments, a key element discussed was placement of a temporary plug in the culvert, which is interesting that you asked me about culvert. And I will get more, I will get to that, um, just a bit. After the, um.
Can I ask you one quick question? That's between the two ponds?
Yes, um, on Route 58 going north, it's almost the beginning of West Moncito Pond. That is, uh.
It's just as you, it's just as you hit the pass over.
Yes.
Cross over.
Okay.
So then, after that, um, they issued response to comments at the same time that the D E P issued the final resource management plan scope of work. So now, um, that's all been reviewed, and, um, we were expecting, oh, no, we were expecting, um, we were expecting, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Okay. We were expecting the final resource management plan to be completed by D 22, 2019. So this spring, I'm waiting, I'm looking, I'm thinking what's happening, and I was drafting an email to D E P to say, who kind of has the deadline, what's happening. I had that in draft format when Paul Collis, our former, um, president of the watershed, sent an email that he received as commissioner to the Central County, um, Central Oklahoma County Water District Commission, including this new first amendment to the ACO. And what that, what that amendment did was push forward all the dates of the major deliverables. So when I asked, um, when David Johnston replied to my email, he said that, and this is from his email, the amendment was distributed because there were unforeseen delays experienced by both parties and the desire to extend the deadline for the comprehensive water management plan, submittal beyond the resource management plan completion date. So the R and P could be decision-making and developing this C W N P. So with quite a bit of, um.
Did he, did he give any idea what the unforeseen?
No.
As they wouldn't. I'm, I'm just wondering, is because the mayor of Brockton passed away and they had to get some on the.
That was after.
After, after the fact.
This was before.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, no, Mayor Carpenter passed away only a few months ago, and the dates you're mentioning were most prior.
No, I'm just saying.
Well, before, yeah.
Only reason I asked the question is, what type of corporation I'll be getting from the new administrators, it's the new mayor.
That I couldn't address, but that's something that we certainly want to have happen. So, good day to you. So where, what we did was take the original administrative center and the new amendment and compared key paragraphs. And this is the, this is actually a document, it's not pink in your packet.
No.
But it's titled timeline comparison for select number of sections. The section that I chose to compare are the ones that had deliverable dates. Not necessarily a hard-coded date, but something like within six months of the effective date of this consent order, that kind of language. We were able to take the original effective date of the ACO and project forward what the deliverable date should have been. And then we were able to take the amendment and, and take the language from the amendment and look and see what the new date would be. And if you look even at the first item, number 33, it talks about, um, the final scope of work for preparation of the resource management plan, it should have been within six months of March 22nd, 2017, which would have been September 22nd, 2017. However, the new amendment is now in 16 months of the ACO, so it's pushed out to 7/22/2018, which was an additional 10 months. So that just gives you a hint of how things start to push forward. When you look at the next page, you'll see that there are five more items that are major deliverables, and each of them is pushed out a significant number of months. Additional 19 months, additional 19 months, additional 49 months, additional 46 months. So what it did was take the timeline of the ACO for the total last time from the effective date to the middle of the C W N P, which is the last thing, from two years to five years.
Five years.
Ten months. Um, so the completion date should have been in 2019, obviously that didn't happen. It's now January of 2023. So I won't tell you the words I said when I first figured that.
You're a lady, though.
Well, my new word is unconscionable.
That reaches politics.
Can, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So the final resource management plan is submitted by Brockton?
No, by D E P. Oh, actually, the name is consultant. C D M Smith, I believe is the name of consultant.
Working for, working for the city of Brock.
And that's due next week? Oh, no, a year and a week.
Which one is, what number are you?
Thirty-five.
Number thirty-five, um, was due 3/22/2019, but is now due 10/29/2020.
So it's, we're gonna set it here.
So nothing is really happening for you. Or they're doing work on paperwork, but nothing is really happening for another year.
Does it, does it help us at all to go to our legislators to put some pressure on D E P? Because they're responsible for making sure the stuff is done. Everly, literally, they're sitting on their hands and not doing a thing.
Well, that's our next, that's something that we're going to take on as well, but any ideas that you have would be wonderful. Um, let me just finish this next little section, and then we can talk about, um, communication. So at the, let's back up a little bit to where we had the, um, public hearing on the R and P. One of the things that was discussed quite extensively, and then both Paul Collis and Mary Ann Moore subjected, uh, submitted written comments about it, there was quite a discussion about a temporary plug that would be placed in Route 58 culvert. And due to, um, not, these were, they were not the only two that submitted written comments about it, so I just pulled this out as the most permanent. So, um, D E P concluded, they responded to every submittal, so they responded to this comment about the plug, um, saying that they intended to test hypotheses and, um, of protecting East Pond during cyanobacteria wounds and could test also pond flushing scenarios. They'd say there's no intent to further degrade West Pond. In response to the public comment from Mrs. P, received in opposition to the evaluation of temporary barrier between East and West Pond, the city will not investigate temporary barriers. Mass D E P concurs with this decision. So this, what we think is a fairly pivotal point, was not included in the amendment. So we're very disappointed that that was not included in the amendment.
So they, they still have the ability to put a plug in there? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, we don't know what it was going to be. I mean, I think it's a question for debate whether they have the ability to put anything there. I don't know that they have the legal authority to put anything between the two ponds, but it's disappointing that it was codified in the original ACO. And when they did the amendment, they did not take it out as they said that they would. So it remains codified in the original ACO. And, you know, I, I just can't, I mean, we just don't know what their intention is, if it was an omission or not. But it, and it isn't clear what they really, what their plan for this or what it even was as a structure. At the meeting, we asked them, and it was extremely vague. But it's still there.
I think the only recourse, we have to even get any information is through our legislators because they're not gonna respond to us.
Well, I'm, those were, um, our suggestions to you, and certainly you can take it and do what you will with them, but we believe it's important to establish communication with Mass D E P and the city of Brockton to guarantee ongoing communication as events occur, not just when a document is issued. This could include regular updates on progress or delays on future deliverables. Um, we'd like to request a point person on the board for the selectmen to serve as a liaison, if that's something you're amenable to. And we'd like to see the, um, Moncito Pond Working Group, re-instituted, uh, which is a group that, um, between the watershed and Kathy and Charlie was started, included all the stakeholders, not just Mass D E P, but all the other Massachusetts, um, departments and, um, people from Silver Lake, Jones River, Mass Fishery, uh, legislators, Tom Culture was very actively involved. So it was a good group, and everybody was able to, um, update everybody else on a informal basis. So those are the suggestions we had to, to try to improve communication so that we're not surprised by documents that are issued with unfavorable outcomes, and we're not surprised by the context of those documents.
Are, are you receiving documents on a timely basis of their delay, as far as you're receiving them? You're not get, I mean, they, they make a decision, then three weeks later, you find out about it?
We haven't, we haven't.
Forever?
We haven't had any communication from D E P since this amendment was sent. But there's no formal mechanism to do it.
It's all politics, every single bit of it.
So what, what is your expectation of a point person from the board to be involved in doing what?
Well, um, prior to, um, when my Ponce de Ponce Working Group was started, Kim Roy became the boss, and she was sort of the liaison between the Water State Selectmen and my Ponce de Ponce Working Group. Um, I don't know what she did with you, but I do know that she would come to meetings. Um, they were once a month initially, and, you know, really slow to every couple of months, every three months, every four months, every six.
Is this the watershed committee you're talking about?
This is the.
This is Silver Lake.
My Ponce de Ponce Working Group. Occasionally, she did come to our watershed meetings, but honestly, the working.
Yeah, I recall a meeting here, I think, a lot upstairs. Yeah, I recall a meeting here, I think, upstairs.
Upstairs, yes, during the day.
Kim was very devoted and dedicated to a lot of causes.
Yes.
Fortunately for her, she had time and, and that's another constraint. But we're going, you know, it's something I'd like to get involved in, but I don't know if I can fit it in.
Well, if there's another way to communicate with you and we're fine with that, you want to be communicated, you know, via email or?
Well, certainly. Certainly you can go to the office hearing and, and contact any of us that way.
And Pam can disseminate the information to us.
Okay, all right, that works too.
She's very good.
She's been very, she was very good working with me to get this meeting scheduled.
Well, she's good at getting to us.
We can't hide.
She's relentless, actually.
Okay, so we'll use her as the point person, as liaison with the board.
And, and I want to make a commitment of.
That, that's the problem, you get inundated. I've got daily commitments. And Gordon's run two school committees and how many subcommittees?
Too many. I have a meeting every night this week.
I know, I looked at your calendar for this week and I, in addition to patriotism. I know, it's, it's a big week for everybody.
We lucked out, though.
You guys especially.
I, I would like to, because I've been involved, you know, not as much as I did in the past, but when Pickford shows here and the changes, we, we work together deeply on this. And I appreciate all the work that you guys do and working on.
Because it's a lot of passion.
The only thing that I see and hopefully is something that's helpful is for us to get letters out to our legislators, as well as, as well as to Brockton. Whoever the contact person is there.
Brockton's going to be chaos.
Well, on behalf of the watershed, we intend to do.
I belong to the Old Colony Planning Council and I meet with Brockton people too.
I'm sorry?
Old Colony Planning Council.
Troy's our rep to Old Colony in Brockton, so he, he has some contact with Brockton.
Okay.
People. Yeah, I'm not even sure in terms of the election, if the interim mayor is one of the candidates.
Yeah.
No, or not. Whether or not he's not.
So everything's in a flux and we're still trying to get information.
Sort, sort of, yeah. I think, should I, do you want to? Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Mary Ann, just going through the next two items.
You, you, you have something to add to the conversation?
Yeah, so, so one of the other points of concern in the ACO is item number thirty-one, which speaks about the respondent being brought in, making immediate efforts to contact the cranberry growers because they discharge their agricultural return fields to Westmore Plaza and for them to coordinate Stump Brook Dam openings so that the Stump Brook Dam Fish Ladder and Slusway can be opened when the cranberry growers are discharging. So that was included in the ACO, this was signed off and codified. So our, so the question is.
Did they do it?
Well, did they do it? Does the town know whether they do it?
No, we don't, we get, we get.
We get no correspondence.
You get nothing. So, so we would propose that perhaps we seek that information from the cranberry growers and the city to, and maybe reaching out again to DEP to see if they are going to enforce this particular article and somehow coordinate a communication. It seems at the very least the town should be informed if this is actually happening or if not, why not? And, and, you know, when it could be. So that, that is something that is in there that I don't have any. We have no information as to whether that is happening. DEP would have to be told by Brockton and/or the cranberry growers. But, you know, how much water is being discharged and whether it's in a coordinated fashion.
Does Kathy drive it? Would Kathy know anything?
Well, Kathy would be a logical place to would be receiving that information, but she hasn't been receiving any more than anybody else.
Charlie has been very instrumental and helpful in obtaining data. There is data from the fish ladder at Stump Brook Dam. And at some point, it's really realized that there was no data. So Charlie's been very instrumental in getting the back data, but it was sort of pulling teeth to get it.
And we're still missing some of that.
Right, and now I'm looking for August and September. But we're going to request it monthly, but it doesn't come voluntarily, even at the end.
Have to keep.
What would you like the board to do? How can we assist?
Coordinate with Brockton to send the data monthly and then figure out how this process.
You have a contact person up in Brockton?
We have both the DPW director, Larry Rowley, I think it is. I don't know how much Brian is still with the Water Department, Brian Creedham or not. And he's still involved because the data we're getting is from him.
Right, because I understand that he's working part-time. He issues the logs from the diversion on a very irregular schedule. Apparently, when, I'm thinking maybe he comes to the office.
Well, the month, the day, we get the daily reports. I know that. Okay, I can set up an automatic, because, where is it up at Hanson? Wanted them, he wasn't getting them and I just said, fine, I get them every day. Yeah, so I just set up an automatic, you know, filtering system in my email that said, anytime I get an email from this address, CC immediately gets forwarded to Donna. I can set the same thing up for you all for the deal.
So curious that he's not sent, that he has two distribution methods. He used to send, he used to include us in those and that doesn't happen anymore and we get them upon request.
Can I just mention something?
Sure.
So you said, they probably won't respond to you as well. But the thing is, is we are telling you folks and even if they don't respond, it's on record that you requested it. You know, and that's, that's a thing we can go back to. Well, it's what they, you know, it's very easy. It's not an art of letter, it's one of letters.
I, I have.
And we could draft it even in, you know, you, you know.
I would, that's what I was about to ask. Would you be willing to draft something, put it together, we could peruse it and then go to there?
Because you folks are more familiar with the.
Sure, and then, yeah.
You're more familiar with the jargon than I am.
Sure.
I have a personal preference for the mayoral election in Brockton because I know one of them personally. I'm hoping that might, I don't know that it will help because they still have to play politics.
Yeah, that's true.
At least make some more approachable.
I love when a politician says play politics.
What is, what is Brockton's major issue with falling through? What's the, what's the reason behind not falling through?
Because they don't, the legislature passed a law back, was it sixty-four?
Twenty-sixty-four.
In sixty-four, they allowed them, because they were having a water shortage, divert, or divert water from our ponds. And not only are they diverting water from our ponds, but they're also selling it to other towns.
That's the key, selling. Well, the other is, just, they don't see any downside.
No, there isn't, yeah.
If they don't do any, if they don't send the information, nothing happens to it.
And they have enough legislative clout as opposed to us.
But just even sending the information is, you know.
But, but that's, that's, that's the main reason is that Brockton's been, because I remember, I can still remember when I could go down there and you could take a canoe and go all the way down Snake River.
Gordon, I also think that money is probably something because they haven't had to spend any money on Mon Ponse ponds. They've spent to maintain their diversion station and equipment and all that, but they've not been required until this ACO was created to spend money on improving water quality in the Mon Ponse ponds. They don't pay for the alum treatments.
That's for sure.
The water thing goes even deeper because they've been approved for more capacity at their sewage treatment plant. So they're trying to sell water in sewage. Because the sewage is metered by how much water.
Water, as they're thinking in.
So it's a huge financial thing for the city.
What, what is the annual cost that the ACO would have caused the city of Brockton to bet?
How would you?
I don't think, I don't think we'd have that.
We'd have to, we'd have to get to a public documents request to find the contract that they have with Camp Dresser McKee, to find out how much they're paying them for that.
No, 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 I mean, like, what, what is the cost that the watershed association feels that Brockton should be paying right now to, to?
You've probably never gotten.
Or what, or what, besides the, besides the treatments that have happened? What, what other things are, do we need them to do to improve the wa, water quality?
Everything that is itemized in the ACO and that will be itemized in the Resource Management Plan.
Open up the dam on a regular basis, let the water flow out so the water doesn't become stagnant and change.
They don't contribute or have not contributed anything towards the treatments of the ponds. And I don't, I don't know that there's a dollar figure out there that's been shared publicly. Somebody may have crunched those numbers at Brockton or at DEP, but it's not.
But, but opening the dam shouldn't cost them anything, right?
No, they actually, they actually have installed automated.
Automated gates, right.
Controls so that from the diversion station, they can manipulate the dam without sending a guy out there in a truck to do it manually.
Their biggest problem is that they get free water and they don't have to worry about resupplying the city or doing a diversion. What was they, they were doing for, not a saline, what was it called?
Oh, aquarium.
Aquarium.
They don't, they use a minimum, they use very little water.
Yeah, they were.
Which cost them more than it would be.
They were talking about buying it at one time, but that's off the table, he didn't bought it.
So, so is there a cost that the, the town of Halifax should be looking at expending each year on the ponds?
We already do.
Well, I, I know what we do with the treatments, but is there more that the town can do to improve the water quality as the town and then turn around and go after the city?
Stormwater runoff.
Stormwater, I think the stormwater improvements will be the next.
Yeah, and that's mandated.
That's just a piece of the puzzle, number one piece of the puzzle.
Well, the big problem would be whether or not the cranberry box have been notified that they're outside of the regulations, they're still flowing the fluid in.
Right, well, that's what Mary Ann spoke about, there's no communication.
But I, but in spores of stormwater breaks and such, you can't make this be Brockton responsible for stormwater coming off of the town's roads and to Mon Ponse Pond were responsible for that.
Or tight tanks around the, around the pond and the high water table.
I guess the reason why I was asking that is if the town had a sum of money that it was going to expend each year trying to improve, then that would be an actual item for damages to go after the city of Brockton. Because at some point in time, if you, if, if something gets pushed off for five years, the ta, the, the town is going to get, continue to get pushed off. They push it off for that and the only way to go after them would be to sue the city.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, and then it depends on the cost of legal action versus what the monetary recovery is.
Well, that's why I was asking, what is the cost that we're looking at expending on the ponds each year?
Well, we've been fortunate enough to get grants for some of the alleviation of allergies in the pond, but that's, that's.
We need a long-term solution.
That's not infinite.
Yes, and that actually just ties right into the final point was just to speak about the, the two issues in the ponds right now are, there are invasive weeds in both ponds. There's been a longstanding, I take it, milfoil invasion in the east Mon Ponse Pond in the northeast corner, although it is really no longer limited to that corner. It is, you know, just.
Expanding.
Yeah, expanding and growing. And I think that's been treated twice, is that right Charlie?
Twice in the last fifteen years.
In the last fifteen years.
We, we in fact had.
Three times, isn't it?
Maybe it's three times. But Solitude did, I'm waiting to get the results. Solitude did survey work over in East Mon Ponse Pond for invasive weeds, I believe this fall.
Okay.
So I, I just wrote down the note to check in with them and see where that stands. As far as the, and then we, we're going to try and do the alum treatment over in East Mon Ponse Pond, but we now had to do an endangered species survey, which also should have been done this summer and I can check the results for that too.
Yeah, so, so that's, so the alum treatments require approvals from National Heritage because we have mussels and I think dragonflies that are endangered species. So, so it's, it, there's quite a bit of, you know, backfilling of dates. Like you have to kind of figure out when you want the treatment and when you need the, you know, approvals in hand and get the studies done ahead of time. So I think we do need sort of a longer term. We've, we've sort of been treating as we go, kind of in a one-off, like we should do alum in the west and we should look at the weeds in the east or whatnot. And I also have no idea how you go about treating two problems in one water body. I, I don't know if.
You can look, yeah.
Right, you can do a weed, you know, an herbicide treatment and then also do an alum treatment. I, I don't know the answer to that, but we'd have to look into whether they can both be done in a season or not. But we have been fortunate that Senator Brady's been really good about getting money into the state budget for the past couple of years for treatments. And I, I would, you know, suggest that perhaps you reach out to him again to just, you know, maybe ask him to keep us in mind because we, we didn't do the east pond this past year. So hopefully we can do both with the alum. Because the east pond ironically was worse this year than the west pond. So we've had great success in the last eight years with the west pond improving quite a bit. And it's really encouraging to see the difference.
But as they pump off into East Lake, we just spread the.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pulled in to east and I, I feel like it's sort of seeded there and I think it's going to take treatments now to be able to control that again. And then there's another weed now too, right, in the west pond. West Mon Ponse Pond. I don't know, I'm not sure what it is. I've sent it out to people, my husband called it coontail.
Coontail.
Which is, seems to be from the tree route all the way up to the northern part.
Dark and all, northern end is forward.
And I don't know what the treatment is for that, but it's another basically.
Yeah. Darren Coon just keeps going.
Yeah. Do you think we need, you know, to just sort of create a, maybe a long-term pond management plan or calendar and figure out what we can do on and how to get the funding?
My first recommendation is that we get a letter off to Senator Brady and Representative LaNatra. See what if they can do anything about it.
Yeah, I think we need to maybe zero in on what we're going to ask them to do as opposed to just, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they can formally the letter to the, to the prioritize the major issues as you see them. But the biggest thing is communication. If we're not getting communication with DEP.
How do we set up a regular channel of communication that? I mean, it can't be that hard for them, they just don't want to.
With DEP?
Yeah, DEP, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've had communication with David Johnston at the Lakeville office in the past, but, you, you know, he's not particularly forthcoming with us, like involuntarily. And I, I think that too, there's a component of the ACO that is between the parties and so they don't really consider like stakeholder. It's like it's between them and Brockton and they, they did meet with us. Sort of, I think, at Representative Coulter's insistence back in the day, Charlie wanted to have them. But they did make a point to stress that this is something that is between them and the city so they don't necessarily feel that they have to keep anybody else in the loop.
Except that DEP is supposed to be representing us.
And, you know, the environment and the environment.
Right, but not, not be representative of Brockton, that's what it ends up being.
Well, that's because they have more political clout.
Well, ACO, ACO.
I, I understand, but somebody's got to enforce it and that's, that's the other part.
Is this, is this something that we could take to a court for a judge? Anything about?
That's going to go back to, yeah, Tom's comment about cost.
It's a legal document, it's not being enforced. Was there enforcement force for doing it, for enforcing it? Because there's a lot of laws on the books that can't be enforced because they don't have anybody to enforce.
Well, again, it's not between DEP and us.
Right, right.
We, we.
You said it's all politics, that's really it.
And maybe, of course, a passion to reach out to Representative LaNatra where I believe that she's knowledgeable about what Tom Coulter had done in, in the past. What Tom Coulter had done in, in the past and she maybe.
The plus, and, and I, I, I liked Mr. Brady, but his political base is Brockton. So, you know, we have to take that into account, he's been helpful to us and I am not slamming that one single bit. However, when push comes to shove, you always work to your base.
Right, but it's important for the city of Brockton to remember that, that the Monpont's ponds. Supply them with drinking water, and although, you know, we are, we are definitely balanced on this, but.
And cash.
We know, yeah, we know that in Halifax, this is recognized as an outstanding water resource for various reasons. But we also know that it's a drinking water supply for many, many people in the city of Brockton and we keep those two factors in balance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and the courage for giving us the time.
We will try to do what we can do.
When, when if can we expect, uh, uh, copy of a letter or something that we can sign off on?
A draft.
A draft letter.
A draft letter.
Oh, okay.
Don't water it down.
Be direct, yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
And, and thank you for joining the conversation.
Good night.
Good night, safe drive.
Okay, where are we?
We have a lady in the pink.
Commander Breck, do you all get one?
No, just.
So we don't even.
Stand up, I guess.
Well, you can tell they're not good at doing anything for two minutes.
This might be interesting, you an outdoor fitness center?
Out in the parking lot though, good.
I made copies for each of you, I'm not asking you to take any action on it as it is, I sent it to the Parks Commission Youth Irregular to see if there's any interest. Um, it's basically, there's a foundation that puts this program together, they throw money in it, but. Most of the money still would have to come from the town from fundraising, I pointed out that. We just gone through with HOPs, a long-term fundraising program and took several years for them to raise two hundred thousand, I guess is. Probably something only over a hundred and fifty would, um, the town would have to come up with. And I'm not asking for the board's interest or anything like that, as I said, I sent to Youth Irregular to Parks and see if there's any interest from them. Because I think somebody has to champion this if they're really genuine interested in.
Taking a run with it, yeah.
Uh, thanks, talking about money, um, Steve Hayward received a construction estimate from the engineering firm of one point one, one point three million for the bridge. Um, at Pine Street, this town, the state's, he has a state grant of five hundred thousand, which isn't gonna be enough. I did talk with Sandy who says that between chapter nine money the town has and funding from town, previous years is about one point six of available funds for. Steve to do this project, so it should be able to be done without tipping in a free cash or stabilization offering.
Who's gonna do the project, we're not gonna do it.
No, you would go out to bid for construction.
And what roads don't get done, that's the question.
Well, yeah.
All, all of them.
Yeah, right. I, I just blows my mind to think that that little bridge costs over a million.
Million dollars.
Um, sixty, just an update on sixty-five Colby Drive, it's one of the properties that we have foreclosed on. Uh, families appears to be obtaining the funds, redeem it, um, or trade contact with the town for the tools in the back taxes, law expenses, et cetera. Um, so something might happen with that late this fall, with four Upton Street, we had Meyer Voyages London come by, they are the insurer of record for the property for us. Um, they did mention that the property is open to the weather, it's a tree-crust part of the house, I'm not sure that. I think the insurer is worried about people getting in there and getting themselves hurt, but I, from the description, I haven't been by there, I probably could go by there, is that. If that's what happened, I think it'd be.
The voyage would be the whole house.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be difficult to, um, close it out, you know, close it up to begin with. So, and I don't know that we want to be spending the money tearing it down either, I did put in a note to. Um, Amy Quest, just going over that backlog so we can get the definitive response as to if we want to sell the property in a few months after the year ends. That someone else could come in and bill without a special permit or whatever else, um, and I'll get some advice from her on that.
Kim, can you ask one other question? So if, if someone doesn't pay the taxes on it and the town moves to take the property. And we're going through that process, the property's not considered abandoned if the town's taking over that property, if, if there's not a ten-year backlog of back taxes. If we're staying up on the process, wouldn't, wouldn't.
I understand what you're saying.
Wouldn't we not get into the, the timeframe of abandoned properties if we're?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be defined, so I'll give you sixty-five Colby Drive, let's say that. Or, this is a worst case, let's say we ended up having to evict the folks from the property, I would never consider that property to be abandoned. Because obviously there were people living there within the last two years, where it was for, for Upton, there's not been anybody there for, who knows how long.
Ten plus, twelve?
That's definitely an abandoned property under, I mean, if someone can try and make the case it's not been abandoned, I think it'd be hard for us to do it. Whereas with sixty-five Colby Drive, it'd be easy to show that it's not abandoned.
But is that a case where we didn't move fast enough as a town, once the building went into, once that property went into.
To pay the taxes? I, well, I understand, so that, well, the thing is, I'll give you, I think it's more, it's gonna be more than a two-year process, let's say. October, November first this year, someone says, I'm not paying the taxes. It's gonna be more than two years after that before we foreclose on that property.
So it's a two, so it's a more than two-year window, okay.
Um, recycling abandonment request number two, this was bill seventeen thirty-four, the municipal lease certificate was done in July. The house was purchased in August, so again, another situation where the new owners didn't get the recycling bill. Um, I don't know, I mean, Kim, in this case, we've already talked about whether we had a C O or anything, was this?
Okay, but, uh, no, so what it is, is, um, it's, the building's still there, the home's still there.
Yeah.
And, um, I think the person is planning on cleaning it up every year.
So the house, this wasn't a new house?
It's level.
No, it's a new house, no, it was an existing house and it just got sold, I think he bought it, he bought it at auction.
Okay, so.
He bought it at auction in, um, in August, it's still there, he's going to.
Right, okay.
No one's living there now.
So nobody's been in the home for how long, we know?
Um, I don't know.
So, so when the municipal lease certificate.
It wasn't shown in municipal.
Okay, I understand if, didn't show up in the July municipal lease certificate, did that mean that the, that the fiscal nineteen bill was paid? Or that they just missed adding it to the municipal?
They missed, because the bills weren't ready.
No, no, nineteen.
Okay.
So, they, they issued the municipal lease certificate in July.
But the bills hadn't gone out yet.
The bill wasn't on there.
I know, fiscal.
He's asking about last year's.
Right, because, because the house existed.
Existed.
So, my question would be whether the municipal lease certificate just missed the, the recycling bill, if there was. Cause I mean, cause the house was there, I mean, there was a, there was a bill being generated.
Did the previous owner pay the last bill, I'm not sure, so.
Well, why don't we delay the.
Hold off on it and I can go to one.
Till we're sure about what the circumstances are.
Check to see if, um, if this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Fiscal, yeah.
Because it sounds like, I mean, there would be a C O on this, a certificate of occupancy, there, someone could move in tomorrow.
Yeah, they could, yeah, 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 I'll tell you. Yeah, I wanna say the others.
Um, recycling grant, this was for ten thousand two hundred, not ten thousand four hundred, um, this is a recycling dividends program grant award. Uh, Susan Johnson does have immediate plans for, I'll spend the money, she saw me earlier this week, but the paperwork is to be signed. By Troy with approval from the board.
So I'm moved that Mr. Gann be able to sign.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aight. Um, the Gainer legislation that was approved last night, I'm gonna get that to our legislative delegation this week. Um, O P E B policy, I'm not asking the board to just take a specific action tonight about this. Um, Sandy Nolan, Camaducci, myself met with our actuaries for the O P E B, which is the. Other post-employment benefits, which is generally health insurance for our retirees, in that, just like for the retirement pension system, you have a liability in which you try and fully fund. Um, and the O P E B liability now appears on our books, we have a small fraction now covered. Um, what our actuaries recommending is that we have a specific policy about how to fund this in the future. Not some, you know, dramatic tomorrow, put a million dollars in, but a couple of points, one, even if it's a slow increase, even if it's a thousand dollars a year. Increase, or I think in the mid thirties or something like that, to, you know, continue to make that promise that will increase the amount we're putting in each year for, to reduce liability. The second is that right now, assuming they don't keep the can down further, is that Plymouth County should be fully funded about twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty. What our actuaries recommending is that we then take that money and use it to fund the O P E B liability after that point. And make that commitment, now, ten years from now.
Who knows?
Yeah, and they're not, and they're, and it's very specific, all these commitments are still dependent on the town's financial position at that time.
What, what's the current normal cost for the current?
Well, we're spending about three hundred, three fifty per year right now, for the, for the retirement or for the O P E B?
For the O P E B.
For the O P E B, we are, for our retirees right now, we're spending about three hundred, three fifty per year, on pay-as-you-go situation.
So the, last, last time I went to the meeting, it was like six fifty for the normal cost forecast for. What they had, cause it was growing at around six fifty a year for the liability, cause we're over.
Well, yeah, the, the liability might be growing, but what we're actually.
Right, right, the cost versus the liability.
And, but we did show a dramatic decrease, um, from the last time we did it in terms of our liability, because. Mayflower changed its plans from X three to X two, rates are lower, and also the inflation rate that they're using for.
Has dropped.
Has dropped, on the other hand, just as with Plymouth County, the, um. The tables of how, how many years people will live are showing, going up, so.
Well, I hope so.
So.
So does Troy.
Right, well, will do.
One, one of the things that we looked at previously was, you're still gonna have the normal cost for the pension.
Right.
And by looking at those actuary tables, we're still gonna be, I'm not sure how much the.
We'll never get out of debt.
How much will actually be able to move.
The difference is about a million dollars right now.
From the payment to Plymouth County?
Once we fully fund it, we'll have a million dollars, you know, we'll still have to be putting money in, as you said, but we'll have a million dollars. Right as of, right now, let's say, to put towards O P E B come twenty thirty.
Okay, I didn't think it was that much.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, well, that's good news, the fund of fifteen million dollar.
Right.
Are we expecting to make a decision on this tonight?
I'm presenting this to you for your review, I can bring it back on the twelve, it's not time-sensitive, the act, the work of the actuaries already been done. The next two years from now, when they do it again, if we have these policies in place, it helps our liability. Um, marijuana, um.
Sanowski.
Yeah, um, he's met with you all a couple of weeks ago, he wrote to me about gain clarification from the board about a cultivation facility in River Street. Given the votes at the town meeting last night, my opinion is I should still submit the draft post-community agreement and ask the board to hold a public. Forum on the proposals, just like we did with Four Daughters, and that way, whether it's the folks on one oh six or any other, you know, folks who live down on River Street. The interested parties can be able to participate in a process and the board can get a sense whether to proceed with the H C A or wait for the town's people to make decisions about zoning marijuana at the springtime.
The only, were you at that meeting?
No, just the two of us.
So, they're, they're not requesting to grow in greenhouses?
They're requesting to grow outdoors, yeah, I, I saw that, which is.
From May through November.
And they're gonna plant lilacs so people can't smell it?
That's it, the lilacs, okay.
And they're gonna control the direction of the wind, which way it blows.
I, I had heard a rumor that they were looking to apply product on to the, to the plants, I, I don't see that as being viable, cause.
For breeze.
Yeah, I.
Well, they already have a place.
I have some strong reservations.
They have a processing plant or a building over in Lakeville.
So they're not processing here, it's just a growing facility that they're proposing, not, not a distribution?
Just growing, they don't want to, no retail, no distribution.
I don't know, I'm asking, I was.
No, it was a, it was a growing, and they wanted to do, they wanted to start with an acre this upcoming year.
They want to grow it here and supply their processing facility over in Lakeville to process and that's what it distributed.
I, I see the outdoor growing as a, as a.
Well, it's a, it's a risky, risky, risky business.
Or maybe less capital costs or that many.
Well, it was, that was.
That was their, that was their main thing, was that it costs something like three million dollars or four million dollars to put a, put a building up and get the land ready.
Well, it depends if they're looking to do this, uh, as medicinal, cause that was, you know, hugely expensive because of the controls and all. As opposed to recreational, if this is recreational, it's.
They're, they're saying that they wanted to grow in the field and then they wouldn't be looking to harvest the bud, they'd be looking to harvest the oil.
Yeah, it's the oil, okay.
That's what.
But if they couldn't get the bud, then they would use the bud.
Get Bud Light.
Light the bud?
Just from my perspective, I, I'm not comfortable with an outdoor grow, that big being the first in the state without, you know, having a real security plan.
Well, he, and he showed us pictures of stuff in California.
And it was just massive.
Massive outdoor.
Valleys.
Well, this is California.
That's what I mean, we, we don't have the same weather that we do in California.
I, I, it, it. First blush here, I, I, I'm concerned, I'm not overly enthusiastic.
What would you like him to do, not, to not say?
No, he, I mean, we can't prevent him from.
Well, you can always submit an H C A to you and you folks can say, sorry, we're not doing it, or whatever you want to do, it works. Well, well, I don't even know if you, you want to tell them, don't even bother.
So what was the board's, um, requirements for when Four Daughters came in, what, what was?
The big concern was security.
Security.
And no retail, they were just gonna, and they were gonna have, uh.
The lighting, the odor control, they had.
Control.
There were those scrubbers.
But that was all gonna be in buildings?
In a building.
I mean, that's a controlled environment, that, that really didn't seem to present that many problems as opposed to.
And we had a hearing on it, so the, the public had an opportunity to chime in on their feelings on it. Uh, part of me wants to, you know, say, you know, we'll have a hearing and then make a decision after having the hearing, we get feedback from the public. You know, because I'm sure everybody down there says, the great escape, I'll come in.
That's a great retreat, yeah.
And one of the issues I brought up was the fence height.
Yeah, which could, it, it wouldn't be a spite fence though, spite, you can't do, you can't, you're right about the six feet, but. If, if you're putting it up to spite someone, it can only be six feet, if you're putting it up for security reasons, it certainly can be above six feet.
Sixteen feet?
Well, I don't know how.
Well, that's what they wanted to.
Well, then they probably could, they, if they could show good reason why they need a sixteen.
Well, here's the other thing, we don't control it, the fence height, it's not in the building code.
Well, yeah.
It's not, I don't really.
It goes, it goes back to the spite fence question.
Right, no, no, I go, I, I understand, it goes back to forty-eight, forty B, uh, not forty B, forty-eight. And, and usually, and we don't have a fence viewer anymore.
What would you like to do, you want to send a letter to Mr. Sanowski stating that? We will get in touch with him, we'll know when there's gonna be a hearing on it, or should we?
Well, he needs to, well, the next step for him is to send in a draft post-community agreement, you would take that, publicize it, have the hearing.
I, I, I'm not opposed to letting him have a hearing, um, I, I, I think, you know, to be able to do that, Gordon?
I'm okay with a hearing, but I don't, I don't think I'm comfortable with the.
I, I'm not either, I, I'm just, I'm reluctant to prevent.
And I will tell him right now that.
I don't want to start a, I don't want to start a security company so I can.
And I will tell him that, you know, the board has a number of concerns, you know, on a number of issues for the property and doing it on an outside facility. And they, he needs to make a decision whether, given that, knowing that, whether he wants to push forward and even do it as community group.
I, I, I definitely go on record as saying I'm not enthusiastic about it. I, 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 I definitely go on record as saying I'm not enthusiastic about.
Okay.
Um, this, since Tom, neither Tom nor I, this was Tom's issue, I don't know, I think the board really discussed it. A couple of weeks ago, I don't know.
No, no, it looks like you held it over for me. Yeah, yeah, I, I find that pretty much the company line. We don't have the bill, so you don't actually collect it, is that what's going on?
Well, I love the idea, well, we can't, we, we can't put an explanation, except that we put the explanation of all the other fees that were charged.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, right, exactly, so I, I don't know where we go from.
The only I could do is bring him in if he.
Bring him in, drag him up here.
Yeah, I'll go down.
Cuff him, cuff him down.
Or, or a car from John and.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, come in here and face me, or face us, excuse me.
The other two will go in the back and just watch.
I mean, this has been a pet concern of mine, and again, I'm not necessarily saying, let's get out of doing it. Uh, come in here and be upfront about it, let people know what they're paying for. I find that incredibly annoying that they keep skirting this issue.
Okay, uh, so I feel the landfill, Jerry, Troy, you gotta continue to send each other drafts, we are pleased, we're continuing to work on that. The zoning articles from last night, I don't know, the ones that we passed over, that is, I don't know where you all wanna go, I did send a note to. Amy Questle, just so she was up to date, the fact that we had passed over them. Um, and said, look, if we wanted to try and something, do something for May. Tell me what needs to happen in terms of your work with the playing board or the zoning board of appeals, you all. Um, as I was imagining, basically, November, December, January, you work on bylaws. February, have an initial public hearing, it's early, but the thing is that, that way, if there's. More work that you figure out that you need to make do, you have another public hearing in March. We go to press with the Warren in early April, we have the town meeting in May. Um, I figure we can do this within the normal legal budget. Um, I know, I know if it's, you know, maybe the finance committee, maybe other people talking. Some people are talking a lot, it's like, you know, we should do a revision of the whole bylaw, you're not gonna do it in six months or eight months. I think the finance committee, I'll talk with them about it on Monday. See, might be saying, we're willing to put money in to fund this particular project of a complete review of the bylaw. Which probably would be appropriate the money in May of twenty twenty, May of twenty twenty, we'll bring it to town meeting.
But in the meantime, we can clean up this.
Is what I'm saying, something along the lines of what the three of you, in terms of direction?
I, I think we need to do something, and if that, and if you think that she'll be available.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking her.
I, I, I'm on board.
I don't have a problem with it.
So, you know, I'll keep your, you know, we're not meeting for three weeks in the Clark's.
Are you sure?
Yes. Cause we're counting on it. We like that fifth Tuesday.
I do like that fifth Tuesday.
Very sad.
I've already booked that.
I remember, I may come in and meet by myself.
You can come in costume too. Um. I'll keep your price about anything I hear from her. Um, also, in terms of talk, once I get something from her, I'll, I'll get the word out to the playing board and the Z B A also. Um, did that, plastic bags and recycling, just I had an email from a resident, I, I, it was a week ago, they were disappointed that we weren't. We only recycle cans and cardboard and not plastic bags, and I provide them that, yes, we do the recycle, in fact, you just have to bring them down to the center. And obviously, we recycle like a lot more, and that we, I don't think he was aware that we had passed.
Foams, cardboard boxes, things.
Plastic bag bylaw back in May. Um, the statewide maximum alcohol license is simply that, every year or so, the A B C C's been raising a limit. Of how many licenses any one proprietor can hold, it's actually nine, not seven now, as of January first. And what happens every, usually when this happens, then Cumberland calls Pam and says, hey, how many licenses are still here? Um, and they never follow up.
Well, we have, we have, what, eight or nine liquor licenses?
The, yeah, yeah, the, um, all alcohol package, we are at eleven or two. We have several beer and wine ones that are still available, and it happened for a number of years.
Now, is that for retail stores?
For package.
Package, packings.
And then there's a different license.
Restaurants are all alcohol.
So there's no action for the board take on that? Uh, Walling Street truck traffic, Mr. Sprague, contact me, ask the board to take any action. About the truck traffic on Waller Street, and I told him, since he, I had told the board that he intended to submit the article to the. You know, town meeting, the board's gonna wait for the results of that effort. Um, proposed chapter seventy in the school aid legislation. Um, if you've been following the news, Florence probably more familiar even, you know, that the Senate came out with a bill. It provides some money to the elementary school, it's not necessarily a great deal, but at least at worst, it's neutral. In the long term, in terms of how much we'd be putting in and how much, sort of like, no, sort of like, it's like, we're gonna give you, here's a dime, go away.
It's, it's not.
And which is even gonna be less, because the church school money keeps cycling it away.
Yeah.
We, we're still gonna get sucker in.
So on the chapter seventy numbers, I, I asked Pam to give out copies to.
I gave it to, yes, behind the green.
Okay.
Behind that green.
So that's the, that's the enrollment numbers?
Yes.
So, the enrollment numbers are decreasing percentage wise.
For another two or three years for us.
Right, and then it gets really bad.
Yes, for us.
For us, it'll be like a three percentage point swing, which amounts to.
Ten percent.
Which would be probably close, at that time, at that point in time going out.
Yeah.
You're probably talking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which is two times.
That's our estimate?
Going up. And three to.
Going up by seven hundred and fifty, is, is the heat on or something?
So, I.
Is somebody smoking in the building? You don't smell that?
Well, you don't have a sense of smell, Troy, I'm sorry.
I smell something burning.
So, I, I just wanted to give caution to us and when we have the meeting with the finance committee that. Although Silver Lake's numbers for the next two years will look manageable. We need to find someplace to put that money. For when that swing happens, because it's gonna be.
Basically, start leaving a little more on the table, is what it comes to.
Yeah, or, or, or not.
But that's only for one year, what we leave on it to.
So what I, I guess what I was gonna recommend is that if there's capital items, that could be. No.
Use reason appropriate for.
If you could use reason appropriate for capital for the next three years, so that we don't hit the taxpayers with a. Basically, a seven percent increase on the taxes just for the Silver Lake. That we, we squirrel some in the unsaved, and then we use that money for capital items, because that. That. Twist is gonna be three to four percent, and the town is going to get hurt when that happens.
What are the budget drivers over there?
Salaries. Salaries and benefits. And with the, with the current contract that's in place. It's about six hundred and sixty to seven hundred thousand dollars, just for the salary increases. Per year, with the steps and lanes and, and the increases, so.
It's gotten out of control, it's unsustainable.
So it, it. So, at a third of that, we're about two hundred thousand dollars a year. Increase. So. I, I just wanted to just have the conversation with everybody, after I saw that. The upcoming, next two fiscal years for Silver Lake. Our percentage of the two hundred thousand will decrease.
Right, but then.
But then it's gonna flop to be like a seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollar swap for Kingston, and basically for Kingston. But the, the total number of students is decreasing, so.
It's gonna decrease a little bit, then it's gonna go back up, well, for the next five years, basically, it goes like that, goes back up after.
So, you'll see a, a dramatic increase in the cost spending per student, which is a driver of the chapter seventy funds. Because as you spend more money, uh, above the net minimum, you get less money in return for your chapter seventy. So as.
Yeah, cause they want you to bring it up.
But as, as the community spends more money, they say, okay, you guys have invested more money into that.
You don't need it.
So you don't need. Yeah, so.
You don't need to decrease because you got the money to pay the bill.
Yep.
So will hurt you.
So. I expect to see the net minimum contributions play a major factor. But as we're seeing the elementary school numbers. The chapter seventy funds are increasing. What used to happen, I was told before I was on the finance committee, was chapter seventy was broken up into three communities.
Yeah, way back in the day.
And it was after, it, it was.
When Pembroke was still advancing.
So the, the town got credit for its chapter seventy, now, chapter seventy is just chapter seventy for the whole district, and it's applied. So it's interesting that Halifax Elementary is seeing an increase. Where the overall Silver Lake is not.
Because the wealth factors of Plinton and Kingston outweigh.
Outweighing what we would get if it was just Halifax. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
So, what we're trying to say, if we much rather have the kids uneducated for, so we have to worry about paying for all the money outright, cause the taxes are gonna be high.
Which is, but that's also the reason why I'm going in on Thursday and saying, you need a revenue-driven budget, not an expense-driven budget.
Right.
They basically say, what's, you know, the, the assessment for the three towns shouldn't go up more than X percent. Not on an individual town basis, because as you're saying.
Right.
Percentages fluctuate.
Our responsibility is to educate and protect the children, it's not to worry about the town's finances.
He's vibing on nineteen seventies back when he was on the school.
It hasn't changed, it's the same lament.
But the, the problem is that you have to provide an education that you can afford.
Right.
Which is what I've been harping on for.
For years.
Well, it's, it's costing, uh, maybe I exaggerated a little bit, but it seems to be, it's costing more to send a kid through high school. The elementary school than to go to college these days, it's about on the same line.
Well, we're about.
You can go to junior college or middle college for around twelve, fifteen grand a year. Whereas it's costing that much to send one kid to school.
So we're about twelve thousand dollars right now for the cost, the average cost, yep. Um, but when you look at the expenditures for vocational, you're looking at thirty-three to thirty-seven, when you factor in transportation.
I was gonna say, yeah, and, and, and I think that's the thing that ultimately drives too, what we're spending for transportation. And if somebody wants something that's out of district, we have to send them, yes. I, 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 I've always had a problem with that.
So, when you look long-term over the cost of, of Halifax Elementary. You'll see a, a very large increase in the special needs tuition and transportation to the tune of, of. About a million dollars over five years. So, when we talk about the expenditures per kid, it's not really happening at the elementary school, it's happening outside of the elementary school, where you see that.
Which is why we had the, you know, unwritten policy, you know, not a gentleman's writing, and we all sat here and agreed that we. We would hold. The reg, the regular session harmless against the special ed, that, you know. An increase in special ed was gonna be felt by everybody, not just the elementary school, the regular session. Because that was unfair to the students who were in there.
So, one of the other things that we're talking about in the proposed changes, was actually using. The, um, enrollment numbers for special needs, because right now, it's like, I don't know, I think it's two percent. Of the total enrollment is the number that they use for special ed. Yes, they, they don't use actual enrollment numbers.
Yeah.
Why?
Well, cause it didn't work out in the budget. But they, but when you look at our actual enrollment numbers, it's probably two to three times.
What they're.
So, I just wanted to give an update on that.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I apologize, I do not need to go into executive session, um, to talk about the mixed bargaining with the mixed. Um, unit and also on the patrol officers, it should only take five or ten minutes, but.
Time's up.
Yeah. It was, it was long, time up was a four and a go.
So, we will move to adjourn from regular session and go to executive session, and we want to come back into regular session. Because it might be detrimental to the negotiating.
And we're going in on collective bargaining for the mixed unit group, the new one, and then for the.
Be careful out there.
Patrol officers.
Gordon says yes.
So who moved, going to executive session?
Troy.
Troy moved. Like, Garen moved, who second?
Tom did, Tom did.
Really, and then we're all gonna say, now we do the all. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, fifteen and sixteen.